You all know who I am. I'm Patty Saretz, standing in for Don Bullins tonight, the Chair of our Board. I'm calling the public hearing for the fiscal year 2023 school budget to order at 6:00 PM. This hearing is to present the draft warrant articles to the public. The proposed warrants will be discussed tonight are on the proposed FY '23 operating budget, paraprofessional contract, and the special education trust. Just a little note about the whole budget process for the public's knowledge. You know, we wanted to emphasize that the school leaders in this room, Associate Superintendent Asbell and our Finance Department, spend a great deal of time working and reworking this budget. As a board, we held workshops to try and understand the needs of our district. It is the goal of this entire group to work on developing the budget to meet learning needs of students while balancing what that with the community needs to keep tax rate increases as low as possible. Our Board believes that this budget meets those goals. At one point, we were at 2.12%, I think, and we all hoped to get to 1.99%. And we actually came in at 1.9% increase. We'll start the operating budget. We will start with the operating budget. I'll read the warrant article for the public to hear. Article 1, shall the Exeter School District raise and appropriate as in operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amounts set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purpose set forth therein totaling $22,582,125. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $22,353,794, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Exeter School District or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, 15, and 16 to take up the issue of revised operating budget only. The school board recommends $22,582,125. So this reflects the 1.9% overall increase to the proposed fiscal year 2023 school budget. I'm now going to turn this over to the Exeter Elementary administrators, who will share the major increases and decreases that are part of this proposed budget.
So for the salary and personnel highlights, just wanted to share a couple of key portions of this. Due to enrollment, Main Street School is requesting to reduce their homerooms, number of homerooms, by one. Lincoln Street School will be reducing theirs by two. And then we will reassign those staff members as follows. So we'll have one STEAM teacher that creates one position for STEAM at Lincoln Street School, one position at Main Street School. One special ed case manager will be at Lincoln Street School. That will provide additional support for students to accommodate for increased number of identified students. And this will be a new hire and capped at a master's plus five level for some additional savings. And we will convert one of the homeroom positions to a tier-two focused math teacher. This position will provide additional intervention for students along with additional leadership and math instruction. It will be somebody that would be comparable to a reading specialist role. Throughout this portion, many salary lines have changed due to changes in employment and new staff replacing longer tenured staff. Principal office salaries has increased due to five additional days for assistant principals. And one change is in the permanent substitute line. We've added one permanent substitute to each school, but we've dropped the amount budgeted in the substitute line by a comparable amount at each school. So it's not a change, but those two lines will show a change in those numbers.
In the special education salary line for tutoring, there's a reduction in the tutoring line because there was a service that was funded from there that is no longer required. So that accounts for that reduction.
In the core subject area, supplies, there you'll notice that there are changes in the student population and leftover supplies and consumables. So that created some, from last year to this year, so that's created some changes in the budgeting in these areas for next year. Budgeting reflects the purchasing of most student supplies at Lincoln Street School by the school district in an effort to reduce the financial burden for families for next year.
Going down to contracted services, this is for special education. There's a reduction in the contracted services line for Main Street School because we have a population of students that are moving from Main Street School up to Lincoln Street School, and they have fairly intensive needs. And so you'll see a corresponding increase and decrease in those two lines. Special education tuition, right now there is one out-of-district placement for Main Street School. There are four out-of-district placements for Main Street School, pardon me, Lincoln Street School. There are four. One of those occurred in August of 2021. So both lines that you see there account for services, aides, any kind of related services. There's also added in there a potential 5% increase. So that's how that line was budgeted. You'll see some object codes were combined. If you look at object code 2162, that was combined to just represent one Main Street School line. This is occurring for the OTs and PTs. Object code 2163, that's where you see the OT and the Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant. They all wound up in Main Street line. Paraprofessional lines, employees were recategorized, just in terms of looking at who's a regular education aide, if someone's an interventionist or a special education aide. So movement of people in those lines would account for the differences there. And then finally, transportation. Transportation was determined by going in, looking at the current expenditures and those amounts that were encumbered, and then putting in an 8% increase because transportation is a pretty tough thing to come by nowadays. So that accounts for that increase. And then there were some summer programming highlights, just a couple of changes. There were a few lines from the past years that were combined into one. They were just, there were some redundancies, so it's just to streamline those line items. And then the summer reading salary director, it includes the director and the assistant to the director. Both of those salaries are in that line. And then the cost for ESY or extended school year services was increased to address what was expended in the previous year so that we weren't in a deficit. So it was increased to match.
And the technology services contract, you'll see there's an increase due to a reduction in the 2122 budget significantly because of some purchases we made in the June of 2020. The budget amount for the 2223 school year is more consistent with past years. And one, just one thing I wanted to reiterate on the positions that I mentioned at the top of the commentary, we're not creating new positions. These are reassignments of current positions. So we're reducing our homerooms and we're taking those positions and reassigning them. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you. Is that it? Thank you very much. Moving along to the next warrant article that we're going to speak to. Patrick O'Dea unfortunately isn't here. He was the consistent board negotiations representative for us. He's unable to attend this evening. And so Sarah Edwards, who is also heavily involved, is going to discuss the fiscal impact of the negotiated master agreement. That will be the warrant in March.
Great. I will read the article two, the collective bargaining agreement, and I would be happy to... Is this on? Push the gray button until it lights up. Hold it down. All right. Now, is that better? Seems to be on. Okay. I will read the article two, the collective bargaining agreement, and then go over some of the details that are included in this agreement. To see if the school district will vote to approve the cost...
I can't hear you.
You can't? There's our way to turn this up. Just go closer.
It's very close.
Yeah, it's not charged. Thanks. Can you tap it? You got that one on? Look, try and stop it. We'll get it. No. Okay. But the tenth time's a charm. Okay. Article two, the collective bargaining agreement. I'd be happy to read this and then go over some of the details of the contract. To see if the school district will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Exeter School District and the Exeter Paraprofessional Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. For the fiscal year 2023, the estimated increase is $284,614. For the fiscal year 2024, the estimated increase is $117,606. For the fiscal year 2025, the estimated increase is $109,986. And to further, to raise and appropriate $284,614 for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributed to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. The board recommends that the school district approve these cost items and make the appropriation of $284,614 with a majority vote required. So I'm okay to make a comment now? Okay. So the Exeter Paraprofessional Association and the Exeter School Board did vote to approve a new agreement for three years from 2022 through 2025. Every three years, a new agreement is discussed and put forward for a vote. This agreement now needs to be approved by the voters in March, and it's presented as a warrant article. The Exeter School District has a good tradition of keeping wonderful and skilled staff at our schools. And tonight, I'm happy to present the overview of the cost and no-cost impact of this agreement. A number of the items are a no-cost impact and we believe beneficial to all parties involved. For example, one is a job description will be provided to each para when they receive their letter of agreement to reemployment to build a consistent understanding of the expectations of each position. Additionally, the agreement codifies a current practice that paras will receive a total of 30 minutes daily of preparation time. So this specific time carved out in their schedule for the students that they support. Additionally, the third point here is there's a separation of service. If there's a separation of service for less than one year and the district wants to rehire an employee, the employee can maintain their previous years of service towards their longevity. So those are examples of some no-cost impact. Now I'm going to go over the specific cost impacts. And there are ways certainly to retain and hire great staff at our schools, and we recognize that wages and benefits are certainly part of this equation. The wage increase in year one is a wage increase of 3.5%. In year two, the increase is 2.9%. And in year three, 2.5%. Additionally, we will be offering new dental insurance, which I believe is new for the paras, and the district will pay 50% of the premium. Also new is that the district will offer long-term disability insurance. The health insurance premium coverage has shifted to 75%, 25% cost coverage of the employer-employee benefit. So we learned throughout the negotiations that the healthcare coverage offered needs to be more affordable for our employees. Additionally, we established a compensated role of a lead mentor for the paras. We've instituted an acting capacity pay that compensates paraprofessionals when they are assigned to teach a classroom in addition to their daily duties. We have increased the professional development allowance from $150 to $350 to cover course fees that we believe are important for our paras to participate in. And we also will provide a computer for every paraprofessional. Previously, paras were sharing devices so that they can complete daily prep for their students. So this is an overview of the agreement with the Exeter Paraprofessional Association.
Thank you, Sarah. Article three of the warrants states, shall Exeter School District, if Article two, which is what Sarah just spoke to, is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article cost items only. And that would require a majority vote. Now I'm going to speak a little, I'm going to speak to the special education expendable trust. Oh, well, a little bit about what that Article three means, I'm sorry. The third warrant article provides an opportunity for a special town meeting to be held should Article two, the paraprofessional contract, not pass coming up in March. This language used to be built into the articles related to staff contracts during a negotiation year. However, the rules have changed, and now it must be listed as a separate article. The last article on the warrant will be the trust for special education. Article four states, special education expendable trust. To see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to $75,000 to be placed in a special education expendable trust fund previously established for the unanticipated special education costs at Exeter Elementary Schools. This sum to come from June 30th, this sum to come from June 30th fund balance available for transfer on July 1st. No additional amount to be raised from taxation. The Exeter School Board recommends this appropriation, majority vote will be required. So we started this fund a couple of years ago. The Board is working hard to build up the special education trusts in the case of unexpected major costs that may occur during a school year that was not budgeted for in the school budget. This can happen if a new student moves in that needs extensive services and/or needs, a need arises with a current student that did not previously exist. In order to support these unforeseen costs, the Board supports and the continuance of adding funds to the trust from the fund balance up to $75,000. This does not have a tax impact, and if the warrant passes, the funds would only be added if available from the fiscal year 22 school budget in the end-of-the-year fund balance. So there's, you know, at the end of every year, we sometimes have money that we give back to the taxpayers. And typically, we're able to do a lot of things that we're unable to do within the regular school year, but our goal is always to return as much as possible to the taxpayers. So again, this is not something that will impact taxes, and it has passed, I believe, the last two voting cycles. So that concludes our presentation on the proposed fiscal year 23 school budget. If there are any questions or comments from the public at this time, we welcome you to come forward. On the budget. Public input for the regular meeting will be after. Thank you for your questions and comments. We appreciate you taking the time to be here this evening, seeing no more public wishing to speak. I will close the public hearing at, what time is it? 6:21 record time. The Board will now begin the Exeter School Board meeting. I think I can put that away. So I call it the order, the Exeter School Board, public board meeting on January 1st, January 11th at 6:21 PM. Let's start with the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to withstand our one nation, our God, and to protect liberty and justice for all. Okay. So the first line item is the fiscal year 23 budget. At this time, I would like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2023 budget as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now we can open it up for discussion amongst us. I think I'm good. We've had many workshops on this and discussions, and we've gone through everything line by line. So I think, I feel pretty good. So, okay, so do I have to do roll call?
Sorry, Patty, do we just need to, I can't remember which one is on, is this on? So I think it's just important to point out that we met not only here as a monthly meeting two different times to talk about the budget, but also as a breakout workshop in which we spent over an hour more than that. I can't remember the exact time, going line to line through the budget. So I just want to point out that even though there isn't discussion now, we've had extensive discussion and a lot of input from all of our administration here in the schools. So in case someone's just tuning in tonight and didn't know that sort of these things have been happening previously.
Correct. Okay, so there's a motion on the table. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have this roll call?
You don't have to do roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. The next item is public input. We already had the public input about the budget, but you're more than welcome to come up and speak to other school-related topics.
Hi, my name is Talia King. I really just wanted to address that I've been emailing the Board now probably for the better half of almost two years, right? And I've asked for a lot of things, right? I've asked for a lot of questions on all different types of topics. I've asked for responses. I've asked for, how can I approach things? Can we meet? Can you ask these questions on my behalf at the joint meeting, on behalf of other people I know I talk to? I've done a write-to-know on your communications based on responses I've gotten in these meetings, and I've gotten some conflicting information, right? So really what I wanted to address is, I don't know what more I can do to offer my help, get responses from you guys, ask you to speak up on behalf of half, if not more of your community, right? I sent you guys so much information, questions we wanted answered about the DEIJ position, how it's going to be introduced in the school in this level of elementary, right? Questions that I wanted you to ask, questions that I told you that other people had told me that they wanted to be asked. And then I came out again to go to the joint meeting to listen, and a whole bunch of other people had similar questions. And then each one of you said, I just want you to know that I support this work and I'm going to vote for it. Not one of you said, hey, there's some questions on behalf of our constituents that I think that this entire group needs to discuss. That doesn't have to be your opinion, but you need to, you need to ask on behalf of your constituents. And I'm going to keep coming here because every time I come here, my voice is going to shake a little less and I'm going to have more questions. All that you've offered me is that I can have my questions posted on the meeting minutes so that they're out there as the meeting minutes if we can't attend. So all that was offered to me is to blast out my name to the public, and I'm not ashamed of my opinions, but to blast out my name to the public and still not get answers. And then I've followed up with you saying, even then, my questions still aren't posted to the minutes. Because I was like, fine, I'll blast out my name so that I can educate other parents and see what questions are being asked, right? And now they're still not out there in the minutes. So I don't know what else I can do. So I went and met with Dr. Ryan myself earlier this week, right? But I offered that to you guys. I wanted to do it together. You know, I wanted it to be like, what is the Board going to do? And what can I do? But I couldn't get anything from you guys. So I went there myself, and I had these conversations with him. But I don't think it had, like, I don't, it's great that he met with me, right? But I don't think it has to, it has to go down that way, right? So I'm asking you, and you don't have, I know you guys probably won't answer me because you don't, but how can I, how can I offer myself more? How can I get answers from you? Your job isn't to have your own opinion. Your job is to represent the community. So still no surveys, still no questions that I've asked you to ask, right? You get that point. So I've also sent a communication most recently about masks, right? Hot topic. CDC Director has come out this week and said masks don't work, cloth masks don't work. So you have two options. Either you put all these kids in 95 masks and the school provides them, or you start thinking about what's going on here? What is the conflicting information telling us, right? So you all voted that as soon as vaccines were available to keep all of these kids safe and give parents that choice, right? That we would go into the, I believe this is how you voted, right? Grab me if I'm wrong. That we would then go to the matrix. So you guys voted the most conservatively, and then we'd move into the matrix. We're obviously at substantial spread, right? But what I wrote in my email is, is think about that, right? The whole reason for waiting on vaccinations was so that everybody who wants to be vaccinated could be, basically so that they don't die. It was never to prevent spread. So now we have Omicron, right? And it is getting spread. Everybody has it, whether you're vaccinated or not. Masks in school, not, right? Everybody's getting it. So I don't understand what the vote to keep the masks on these kids is doing anymore. It's not preventing spread. And those that can get vaccinated have, and so therefore are protected. So what are we waiting on? Why are we keeping the masks on the kids? There's no counterargument to the mental health stuff anymore, and more and more information is coming out. I don't know if you saw the article, Dr. Kim on Seacoast Online, which is a local person, saying basically, pro-vaccination, take the masks off the kids. They don't need it. They're not at risk. So I asked in email, could you guys have another vote? No response. Am I asking something that the answer is no? Please tell me because I don't have time to keep chasing you guys. And Don's response was, there's not going to be a vote at this time. And Dawn's response was, there's not going to be a vote at this time. Masks are staying on. No reference to any of the materials that I sent. Now CDC director's coming out saying that they don't work. No, no, Mrs. King, we are not going to take the masks off right now because we're insubstantial, but we are going to take up the idea of having a survey, because we agree, we have a split community, and we want to see who you all feel. And it would be in your best interest to take whatever comes of that survey and share it broadly, be honest about it, because it didn't work well for anybody in this community when 80% of the community wanted the kids back to school last year, and that didn't happen. So I feel I have this conflicting thing going on, where I feel like I have a horrible relationship with you all when I'm trying to have impact, but then I have a good relationship with Dr. Ryan, and I have a good relationship with Tanya and Beth Katarat, and this is what's becoming the, how can I, how can I have impact, because I want to help? So please, really think and not just follow the crowd. Think of where we're at right now with these masks. Think of where we're at right now with decision-making. And if your community asks you questions that they want raised, you don't all just press the button and vote yes without even triggering a conversation. I mean, what is the point? I asked Dawn, should I stop, should I stop emailing? Should I, because I'm not getting anything out of it. And I won't, but it's an honest question. And I know you guys are in a tough spot, but given that, I would try to, I would hope you'd try to figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your feedback. Is there anyone else here for public input?
Hi, I'm Deb Whitney. I live here in Exeter. I have a second grader at Main Street. I realize that the guidance for masks and stuff is changing. I work at the hospital. We still have quite a lot of COVID and a lot of RSV as well. We're seeing flu back. I think I would err on the side of caution before changing the policy right now. I know there's a lot of nervous parents out there. I think we're going to get beyond this bump in a few weeks is what they're suspecting, and I would say, you know, we can look at what CDC is saying, but I think we got to look at it with a long view and say, okay, can we sneak this out? And then really make it successful into the spring where we can have open windows and that sort of thing. So I would just urge caution on that based on what I see day to day in my patients. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you're doing, as always.
Thank you. Okay, just move to the next. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a PTO update. Is Jennifer Gardis here?
No, but I did get an email.
Okay.
That Dawn just sent me. If I can give the update.
Okay, great.
All right, so I'm just reporting an email that was sent forward to me from Don Bullins. Jennifer had sent her this. So Jennifer says, Happy New Year, and these are some things that the PTO is working on. Get Fit in May, the 24th Annual Exeter Elementary PTO Get Fit in May will be our first-time offering, both in-person and virtual 5K options. The in-person 5K will be on Saturday, May 21st, 2022, at 9:30 AM. That's the 21st of May. For those who want to get back to the excitement of a real-time challenge on a fast course that loops its way through several neighborhoods that border the elementary schools. The fun runs are back this year, half mile for grades K through 2 and one mile for grades 3 through 5. The virtual event will take place on Sunday, the 22nd, and Sunday, the 29th, 2022. A virtual event means you can complete the 5K on any route you'd like in a way that best works for you, walk, run, bike, hike, scooter, skateboard, at any time between Sunday, May 22nd and the May 29th. Complete the 5K at all at once or break it up over the course of a week. It's a 5K, you're away. Registration will go live Saturday, January 15th. Participants who register for any Get Fit May event by 11:59 on April 10th get a t-shirt. I know that's critically important to people, so I'm going to say that date one more time, 11:59 on April 10th. You have to do your registration so you're guaranteed to receive a t-shirt. As far as fundraising, Square One Art brought in a total of just over $5,800. So thank you to all who purchased items through the fundraising. We hope you're enjoying your child's artwork. Upcoming fundraisers, Breathe New Hampshire Fund Pass 2022 Coupon Book, this is new. The Fund Pass offers incredible savings over to 85 New England Texans, such as family amusement theme parks, adventures, zoos, museums, water parks, et cetera, including the rock climbing and trampoline parks. Open Positions. Co-president. Responsibilities are to help prepare the monthly meeting agenda, preside over meetings, forums, and oversee committees, serve as liaison between preschool Main Street and Lincoln Street School and the PTO, attend and report to the monthly school board meeting. They're also still looking for a web administrator to manage the PTO website and the Get Fit in May WordPress website, et cetera. The next PTO meeting will be Wednesday, January 12th at 5:30 PM via Zoom. The Zoom meeting can be found, information can be found on Minga. Thanks, Jennifer, for sending in the report, and that's it for her report.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the SAU 16 Administrative Update. Financials will be given by Michelle Larson, Assistant Director of Finance and Operations, and the board update will be given by Esther Asbell, Associate Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening. You all received the financial packet in your, in your board pack. So we, we had expenses at the end of the last meeting at $1,538,704, and we had some additional expenses and encumbrances, mostly featuring longevity payments to the support staff and some additional special education, transportation expenses and encumbrances. The additional encumbrances and expenses for the month were $258,144. We also do have some additional revenue. We get reimbursed from FEMA for any COVID-related cleaning-type expenses. We also received some comp aid from the state, and we have also received a reimburse, a, hmm, what do I call it? A surplus back from the Health Trust. So we, the, the district portion of the surplus that we received is $178,759. So right now, at the moment, even though we know there will be some more expenses and encumbrances, we're projecting, we're projecting the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year at $1.48 million. Does anyone have any questions?
And the fund balance we're talking about is typically what that warrant article for the Special Education Trust would come from.
Correct. Okay.
Yep.
The SAU report, not a whole lot happening since the meeting in December due to the vacation and break and all-consuming budget season. So a lot of our work has been focused on prepping budgets and getting those prepared for public hearings. We are continuing, though, to move forward with the Portrait of Educator. We're working to schedule hopefully one last meeting. It might be two, but we're getting closer to being able to present that to the Joint Board this spring. That's looking good, that, that evaluation system that we saw a little bit last spring. We're working through the improvement plan process, et cetera, to give you that full plan, hopefully in the board, in the Joint Board meeting in the spring. So we continue to work on that. We also continue to move forward with Balanced Scorecard. We're getting close to zoning in on an appropriate SEL, Culture and Climate Survey, that was part of that Balanced Scorecard. So we've narrowed it down to a final one, I think, to bring to our SLT and then to principals to see. It's a good research-based SEL out of Harvard has developed that, and they've been, they've done just over about a million kids with that. So the research, like, looks like a nice valid process where teachers and students, at least grades 3 and up, will all be able to answer and have input into those surveys. Of course, because it's a non-academic survey, we will have to get parent permission for students to take that. So we're moving forward with zeroing down on that survey also. And along with that, we do continue to do our secondary trauma-informed management work with Dr. Robert Macy out of the International Trauma Center out of the Boston area. He's working on continuing our tripod work. We've done psychological first aid training with many of our support staff across SAU 16. We'll continue to do that work all the way through this year. We're targeting different areas and different personnel to get specific training. For example, one area we're targeting is at the middle school to get some training so we can incorporate SEL into the curriculum. It's called CONNECT with a K. So we continue to move forward those needs and to support our staff and students around SEL and the post-secondary trauma stress management. So those are some of the highlights we've worked on since in January as we continue to move forward. In regards to the superintendent evaluation and goals, we will do a full presentation to the Joint Board on the 24th. So an update on those goals that were approved in November. When I checked in with Dr. Ryan, he would like to do a full presentation to the Joint Board on the 24th.
Would it be possible for you to give us some nuts and bolts for this mid-year?
At the Joint Board meeting.
We are supposed to come prepared to give the feedback to you that night. So we can guess.
We can, we can, I can look at those and give you, but when I went to Dr. Ryan for that information, he said that he was planning on presenting that to the 24th, to the Joint Board. So I don't have a lot, but certainly I can look at that while we continue the meeting and at the end, if I have any updates, I'm happy to share them.
Okay. We have, like, the communication, we kind of have an update on that goal because we got a survey as a board as to what our.
Yes, and all the boards did give feedback into that, and I think that's part of, we wrapped up in the presentation, yes.
Sometimes you type out the.
That will start happening in February, yeah.
And so I didn't really write down where we are with this, so maybe we can chat about that after.
Yeah, and I know part of it probably is Balanced Scorecard, and we are working on that. That's the SEL piece that I just mentioned. I know that that was a piece of it, I believe. So I know communication and Balanced Scorecard were two of the main.
Correct.
Goal areas, so that's the update on the Balanced Scorecard.
All right, all right. I just didn't make all the notes, but we can chat after.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
I don't think this is on again, is it?
It is, finally.
Okay. So the SEL survey that we're talking about, so you said that we need to get permission from parents for students to participate. Are parents also participating in the survey?
To my knowledge, and again, we just narrowed in on this this week, working with Harvard, trying to narrow down what the best survey might be. So I haven't even taken it to SLT yet. So I'm just saying that we're working on that. We haven't defined particularly honed in on one. We've honed in on one, the subcommittee, to bring to SLT. So that one does not have a parent component, because we're measuring on the Balanced Scorecard, it was students and staff. So the Balanced Scorecard in those groups we did, it was the student and staff sections that we were going to measure the culture and climate in the schools on. So that's what that committee focused in on, was what those committees in those three broad categories. But certainly it's something else we can look toward.
I thought I recalled somewhere that the superintendent's office was putting out a survey to parents. Is that different?
I believe that's different, yes.
Yep. Patty, do you know what that survey is to comment on?
Well, an overarching goal of the communication plan from the superintendent's office is to work with people in the community and bring in and get their feedback and input, and so everyone feels more part of the process in our SAU, and it provides more transparency.
Yeah, I don't think that was specific to the culture and climate in schools. It could have been part of it, but I think it was the broader. One that I'm familiar with was really about communication and transparency with the community and ideas that they might have and where they're at, and then take that data and try to make some communication goals. I think that was more in response to the superintendent's goals than the Balanced Scorecard. I think it's two different things.
Okay. I also wanted to, just based on public input that we've received, ask more questions about surveys and when we do them and how often we do them, because I think that the district is engaged in making sure that surveys that go out are comprehensive, and I think that the questions that get asked to the community are really important in the way that they're written, and, and that it's important to continue always the communication, and the board has filled out some information about communication with the head office, and we're going to talk about that perhaps in non-public today. So I just wanted to point out that there are ongoing surveys that we're preparing through the district level right now. Okay. Thanks.
That's it for me. Unless there's any other questions.
I'm good. Okay, next on the agenda, we're going to have the approval of meeting minutes. I have read through them, I'm not sure if anyone else has, but I am prepared to make a motion to accept both December 7th, 2021 Budget Workshop Meetings and December 14th, 2021 Public Meeting Minutes.
Do we need to vote on them separately? I need to abstain from one vote, but I can vote on the other. So I'd like to make a motion to accept, as stated, the December 7th Budget Workshop Meeting, because I can't vote on both. I wasn't there at last meeting. So I'm proposing.
We'll have to hold the vote, because she was, she was there. I was there. I know, but we need.
On the second one, so we can pass the first one, but not the second one.
You were not there on the 7th, but you were there on the 14th. Okay.
Other way around. I was there on the 7th at the budget meeting.
All right.
So we can pass that one if you guys read the budget meeting notes and are prepared.
Okay, so a motion, I'm making a motion to accept the December 7th, 2021 Budget Workshop Minutes.
And I second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is Tanya Neve, Principal of Main Street School, doing her principal's report. Or Drew can go, sorry.
So we send videos, don't know if you got the videos. It's something that we're, we're trying to keep up on, but I think it's important for people to see what's going on at school, and it's kind of fun. And like I say, Drew, his kids are doing really well, interviewing each other and putting little things together. Mine are not, sometimes I get a little camera shy, so I try to do activities, but I hope you guys enjoy those. And then just a few other things that are going on on our campus. We have started our benchmark assessment, so it's kind of our second round. We do early diagnostics at the beginning of the year to try to figure out what our instructional path is going to be. This is the second go in January, so we're excited to collect that data, look at areas of growth, look at areas of need, so that will be coming in early February, and then we can readjust some of our Tier 2 intervention groups. So right now, we're just kind of in data collection mode. We still have after-school tutoring happening twice a week. Our teachers today and on Thursday are willing to work on their Alma reporting. They, the reports go out on the 28th, so it'd be helpful if parents, any parents that are listening, to make sure that their information is up to date in Alma, because they are sent electronically. So we're, we're trying to put those together. Our teams have been working together to make sure that there's a common understanding of what the proficiency levels look like so that there is some consistency from room to room, so that's taking place. And then we're excited, our next two site-based leadership team meetings, we are going to have Mariam come, and she's going to talk about restorative practices on our campus, talk about what that looks like for our age group of kids. And our focus really is on community building, and if a student or a staff member does something that is perceived as damaging the community, how we repair it and get back together so that people do not feel isolated or left out or any of that. So that's kind of the focus of what we're talking about for restorative practices, is how do we stay together as a community? And when somebody is injured, how do you get welcomed back and how do you earn your way back? So that's kind of like at our age group of what we're talking about, and so we're going to bring it to our leadership team and start brainstorming for next year, but we're excited about that move in SEL too. So that's just some upcoming stuff for us.
Thank you.
Excellent. As usual, a lot of similarities. We're two in the, in the middle of mid-year benchmark assessments. We're on the same schedule as Main Street School and using them for the same purposes, so we'll revisit how our kids are doing and regroup if necessary for the students who receive intervention or not. Couple cool little highlights. Right now, we've got some no-idling posters that we would like to put up, but Main Street School also has, you already have yours up. Ours are not up, because the ground is too frozen to put the stakes in the ground, so we're waiting for a little thaw before those get in there, but they will, they're all ready to go. Let's see, we are engaging in a staff wellness for those who decided to join, some didn't. But we're doing a winter warrior challenge, so staff who, staff, staff who want to get outside every day and rock. Staff who want to get outside every day and rock, walk, run, whatever, a mile, three miles, five miles, whatever they want to do. We've got a good crew of people that are doing that here at Lincoln Street School to try and keep moving in these cold, cold days. I actually have to go do my mile after this when I get home. It's going to be freezing. Let's see, PD, we've got some professional development. Reading is, our reading with Marian Nice is going to be continuing this coming Thursday. We do that every Thursday. And that work is with, she's an unbelievable speech path and reading specialist, and she works with our teachers to learn how to differentiate for those kids in the classroom that we know we've talked in the past about how much some of our, especially our younger kids, are struggling because of the remote learning. And then we have math. It works out to being about once a month where our staff engage in a couple of different days of both remote learning with a coach, and then they go into classrooms and observe and get feedback and debrief. And then on this coming Thursday, the 13th, we have an early release, and we're hosting a roundtable discussion, I guess, with Mariam Levy, who will be talking about restorative justice. Kevin Pacharo Mariñez, who is the assistant director of DEI at Phillips Exeter. He'll be talking about DEIJ and Jody Lebarsky from Seacoast Mental Health. So the three of them will be talking about how those, their three disciplines sort of intersect and how a lot of what we're doing here at school is, when you do one thing for one of those disciplines, it also works for another. So we're looking to see how those things overlap. So we're looking forward to that. Just generally speaking, in terms of school management, we're really starting unbelievably looking to next year, starting conversations about if our teaming model that we've been working on this year, if we want to continue with that, we'll be looking at our master schedule and our intervention, our NTSS system to make sure, you know, take a look, make sure we're doing everything we can, especially with some of the changes that we're looking to make next year in our staffing. Make sure the system that we have will work out all right. Those are the big things at Lincoln Street School. And then I think this is probably the time we're going to talk about the grants. Is now the appropriate time? Okay, excellent.
So we've given a document. We've met with the grants manager for the SAU, and she kind of helped us put some of these pieces together. So we meet every month, all of us meet, and we look at the needs. Grants are kind of funny because some of them run three years long. And so the front page, you'll see that it kind of explains what the ESR grant is for. When we surveyed the community, there were a couple key focus areas: academic learning loss and enrichment, social-emotional learning and mental health, staff development and professional learning, technology resources, and safe and healthy schools for in-person learning. So those were the critical areas that we were trying to focus on. So when you go through the document that we've handed out to you, you'll see that there's a couple headings. It also states that this is over the next three years, right? So the first area for academic learning loss and enrichment, you can see that how we've tried to address them. And these are flexible numbers. So it depends on, we may say that like we want to have tutoring, but if we don't have applicants or people to hire for the tutoring, then you make an adjustment, and then you put funds maybe into another area. Right now, we do have tutoring going on at Main Street School, so that's why it's on here. This is how the funds are currently being used. But if we were to look at this document in a few months, there may be some changes, right? So it's just like an ever-evolving document. But right now, we're covering tutoring. We have an interventionist at our school. Drew, they have some after-school homework intervention program going on at their campus. Instructional support teachers, that's, we each have some permanent substitutes which provided consistency, and we were able to offer those individuals professional development so that the academic, our expectations for the academic piece is also being met. So that was a good investment of those funds. And we each created a school-based leadership team. So those are stipends because we asked them to stay after school several times a month just to make some campus-wide decisions and share leadership. You want to talk about any of these pieces?
Sure. So for the social-emotional learning, mental health, you can see we've got money budgeted for Seacoast Mental Health and the services that they provide here. Some outdoor activities for kids to engage in play outside. Those, the materials have been purchased for that. It's just a matter of, again, waiting for the thaw to come to be able to put it up. But again, it's an opportunity for kids to play together, learn a new skill, and work out differences. SEL curriculum, that is some of the work that both Lincoln Street and Main Street School will be doing in the area of restorative justice. In addition to supplies for our Zen Den, de-escalating tools like weighted blankets and things like that. Some of that money will be.
Do you want me to go?
Sure.
And then in the area of technology, so this was staff development and professional learning. There was a technology coach that was in, that was paid for out of the grants last year, but now is in our local budget. So that's why it has just last year identified there. Math Empowered, that goes to what Drew was talking about. We have a consultant that is working with lots of schools in the SAU, and she comes and models and talks about best practices in the classroom and different ways of thinking about math and collaborating. So the kids get together and they work on math problems. They have conversations. The Language and Learning Connections is a multi-year program for talking about reading, the science of reading, working on interventions to make sure that we're meeting kids in their different levels and differentiation. So that's that area. And then a big chunk of change went towards devices. Some of those purchases were made at the beginning of this year, right? So I think that we feel pretty good. We're covered, that we have some replacements. We can keep everybody up to date. So that's a large portion of that money.
Which, by the way, we'll give Michelle Larson a big shout-out for saving a bunch of money. This is one of those things that this will be, this number will be changed, the amount budgeted, because we got some savings for, was it a state program, federal program?
It was a federal program.
Thank you. Federal program, $400 of each for each of the devices was paid. And then finally, safe and healthy schools for in-person learning. We had to buy carts for Main Street School to deliver food around at the beginning of this year, was it this year? In addition to some two-way radios to ensure that all the people in all the different corners and crevices of the buildings can be able to communicate with. What we're, I guess, asking of you is to, like, we'll, on a regular basis, say, every month or two months or so, we'll come back and let you know sort of what's been spent or what, just give you an update on these kind of things. In addition to when one of these things are at a place where we can measure them, you know, we gave you the success measurements on the side. We'll give you an update on what that looks like. We are collecting mid-year data right now. That's really, really early, to be honest. A lot of these are two to three years in duration, so we really won't really realize the success until sometime now. But when we can, we will update you with that kind of information. If that fits for what you guys are looking for, please let us know if there's something that you feel like we missed that you would want to know.
I guess I just have a question. I didn't, so the ESR funds, are funds given to us by the state?
The federal.
The federal government for specific things, COVID-related? Okay. When you say it's over a three-year period, so they're not ever, so they're going to continue to give these? They've committed to giving these funds for three years?
We have access to the money that's been allocated to us for those three years.
They've given us, they've given us the total amount. We have three years to spend it. In other words, if we're putting in tutoring, it makes sense to carry that over three years because we know a closing gap isn't going to happen in just the first nine months.
Great.
So we want to budget and spread that money out over the three years to make sure our services catch the consistency in continuity.
Okay.
Right. They're pandemic funds.
Okay.
For learning loss.
Great. That was great. This was amazing. Thank you. I do have, oh, go ahead, Heather.
I have another question around how, first of all, thank you for the people we asked for. I'm curious too, does it similar, obviously, when you're at a point where you can really message and communicate it? How does that make you feel about it?
So, go ahead, Nancy.
Yeah, we're going to take this, and this will be posted on the webpage hopefully by early next week just because our webmaster is out sick this week. And then as they add in a measurement, anything they make in addition, they'll present it to the board first, and then we will post it on the update. But this actual document will get posted now.
Will it be also included in our packet this meeting or no?
In the future, if they update something, is that what you mean?
No, like, is this going to be a separate posting on the Exeter Elementary School?
There's an actual ESR page.
Okay, specific to that. Okay. But it should be noted somewhere that it was talked to, talked about.
It'll be in the regular packet of the meeting minutes, but it'll also be posted on our ESR page.
Okay, perfect, perfect. All right, I'm good.
Can I ask a question about the instructional support teachers? So it looks like it goes onto the second page. So this is certainly the largest category, $325,000 and change. So as we're talking about having instructional support teachers providing classroom support, assistance for teachers, and you've referenced that it's for four people, are these four full-time people who are here over the course of the three years? For two years, okay. And so I think one of the things that we discussed previously is that to meet the educational gap for students is that the largest cost but most effective is having more individuals for one-on-one instruction or small group instruction for students. Is that an accurate sort of picture that the people who are coming in to help? Like, this is a really large budget item, like, of the way that we're directing funds towards this. So this would seem to be an area that we would expect to be able to have a large impact on student sort of growth. Is that?
Yeah. So I don't know if this is exactly what you're looking for. I think the permanent substitutes fill any need on campus. So they do serve as one-on-ones for certain students that might need a one-on-one, like if their person is out. They can be a classroom teacher. I mean, they can really fill any role. So they get to know the kids. It's not like just somebody that we would have, like, on a daily sub that picks up the job on the list. It's somebody that the kids know. They get to go to all of our training opportunities, so they have a deep understanding of the curriculum and the content, the scope and sequence of the work we're doing. So I feel like, my opinion is that they are serving a bigger role than what we would just hire for a daily sub, and they do work closely with kids and know where we are in the educational sequence.
Just one other thing. They allow our staff, our teachers, to be able to attend the professional development that we're also purchasing with these funds. So without these permanent people here that are working with the kids on a regular basis, our teachers, there's no other time, there's no time for them to receive this PD to learn how to address the kids in a different way.
I would anticipate that we might get more questions from the community about it because it's a large item of our ESR funds. And it seems like it's a dynamic role that these people are, like, sometimes people think a substitute, and they have a preconceived notion of what that is, sort of when I was in elementary school. And it sounds like the role that these individuals are providing is more diverse and has a good impact on our students. So I just put that out there for, you know, further questions and conversations because I think it might come back up as a question. Thank you for all the itemization. It's great.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you both very much. Moving on to the committee reports. The first committee is the DEIJ Committee and Abby Hood, Special Education Assistant Director, who is a primary leader forming this committee about three years ago now, 2019. She's going to give the.
Yeah, we were there together.
So Patty had asked me to just speak a little bit about the committee since it's the first board meeting of the new year. So I just wanted to, you know, we just talked about the committee was formed in 2019. It's comprised of educators, our administrators, our school board, and community members. So it has a wide berth of stakeholders that it carries. And really, it was kind of cool to hear some of the school updates because our role is really to support the Exeter School District's mission to make sure that our buildings are inclusive places where all of our families feel welcome. And so that's really our job, and we do that through sort of looking at professional development. As you heard Drew talking about, and Tanya, you know, that just naturally came up. Those next steps are really what we're focusing on in our professional development. And it's cool to see it embedded, right? Like, we're starting to see that carryover. We're starting to see things embedded. We look at it through communication, through our school culture, looking at anti-bias curriculum and programming. So those are some of the ways that we go about doing that as a committee. We met December 21st, so it wasn't that long ago, so not a ton has happened. When we met at that time, we kind of started to talk about gender inclusivity and what does that look like in our schools and our classrooms. And then our next meeting is next Tuesday on January 18th. In the interim, of course, we have our early release. We have our, we have a small group meeting tomorrow to be talking about curriculum. So they'll be doing some of that work. And then upcoming, Main Street School is working with Mariam and the leadership to start seeing how restorative justice fits within DEIJ and SEL as Lincoln Street's doing some of that work this week. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. The next committee is Enhanced Learning, and that's you, Heather.
Oh, yeah. Okay, great.
You can do it. Heather and I are on the committee together, so we'll team up. Go ahead, Heather.
So you chime in, Sarah, if I'm missing anything, but the Enhanced Learning Committee is an Exeter school committee. And it has a committee comprised of school board members, principals, teachers, and the curriculum directors at Lincoln Street School. And I believe the primary goal is to work to support the SAU's goals to support computer-centered learning, assessment, competency-based student growth. Our last meeting was this morning, bright and early, and we had, Sarah and I had the great opportunity to hear a little bit more about the school's processes for reporting competency-based student growth using the Alma platform. And I'll just speak that, you know, one of the things that really stood out is just how strong the team collaboration is amongst the teachers in terms of sharing ways of collecting that data, also meeting with UA teachers to help us quickly assess the students in multiple areas. It was really, I think, a great asset. And continuing to explore ways to sort of put their heads together to efficiently collect the data and find their ways of reporting the competencies that parents.
I think it's been a really collaborative effort between the two schools and the grade levels as people are learning how to communicate to parents the competencies and that we've seen a shift in a wonderful way to communicate with parents the progress of students. And I know that it's been a lot of hard work and many years of research and now rolling it out. So, thank you. And when is it coming out again? January 28th?
And our next meeting is February 8th.
January 28th is the next reporting?
The next report card for.
The next committee is, were you done?
Yeah.
Was facilities, and Dawn's not here. Do you have any?
No, we didn't.
Okay. Then the next one is negotiations, and I think we're done.
Yeah, that's what I presented today. So the board has been meeting with the parents, yes.
The next one is policy, and that is Heather and Patrick.
Yeah, so just an overview, the policy committee is a district committee, and includes reps from each board to review and establish common policies for each board's review and approval. Our last meeting was on December 9th, and we're actually going to be taking a pause and meeting in person due to the spike in COVID and the budget season. We will continue to review policies, but we'll be next meeting in person on March 10th. And I think in our packet, we had the IDE parental objections specific course material, though we approved that in our last. though we approved that in our last, our last meeting. We're good to go on that one. There were two other policies in our packet. So the, the first one was the policy code is D F A. The policy name is investment. And so the law states that at least yearly, the school board should review and adopt an investment policy for the investment of public funds in accordance with provisions of applicable statutes. So we have adopted this policy in compliance with the law and our responsibility to review it each year. The policy committee did not recommend any changes to the content of the current policy. However, we added some relevant RFs in the reference.
Who added?
The committee. It's adjusted.
Heather, can you comment on why it's in our packet twice? It says Exeter School Board, S A U 16. Is it just?
I believe that the first, yeah, I believe that the content of the policy is the same. And one is the prior version with one less clause.
Oh, okay, I see. And the very last section of the law reference. And these are familiar because we see them every year relating to the objectives of investment, so. So is this a first reading?
Yeah, and if it's the same policy in the board's council, you can't, you don't, you can adopt one at a first reading. You don't have to wait until a second, so that's a.
So we can make a motion to approve this?
And do I just make a motion to approve as amended?
As presented.
As presented. Patty, do you have any questions?
I don't.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy D F A investment as presented.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the second policy that was reviewed by the committee in your packet is I K S P. And that's the alternate diploma policy. This is also a first reading.
Heather, I think it's in our packet just so you can be aware, the board can be aware, because it's really a high school-specific policy. So it's really just for your awareness, you wouldn't adopt this for Exeter because it doesn't impact Exeter, the world of the high school policy. But just so you're aware that it exists.
It exists.
Can I ask a question about that? Is this a new, a new policy, or has it been here at?
It's not a brand-new policy. We just, it's new for us.
It's new to the district?
Yes.
An alternative diploma. Will be a new category of diploma for students in our district. So the alternative diploma will be a new opportunity for a tight, it's a new categorization of a diploma?
Should the, should the Exeter Public Board choose to adopt it as presented?
Got it. And they might be reviewing that tonight? Great.
And we already accepted this one?
Yeah, we both, yeah, we accepted I G E.
Okay. All right, thank you. The next is sabbatical. Sarah?
Yep, sabbatical. Last year in the spring to discuss one candidate who applied for sabbatical, and we are meeting tomorrow at 3:30 for a candidate who is applying for sabbatical for the following academic year.
Okay, the next committee is safety and security. Why brought this whole thing? We haven't had any meetings since October, I think. And because of the importance of all meeting together, as we all know, it's all five towns, police departments, fire departments, all the administrators, our entire S A U leadership, as well as school board members from every district, as well as Homeland Security and P E A Security. And they work on everything from physical safety to mental and wellness safety, which has become a lot more predominant these last couple of years. We will meet again in March because this is an important meeting to have in person. And there's nothing pending or any new things that we're working on that need immediate attention. So we're going to push that meeting out until March in hopes that we can meet in person again. That date is to be determined. And the superintendent evaluation committee. So every school district, every town has their own superintendent evaluation committee. And they bring their evaluation materials to the joint board meeting because the only board that Superintendent Ryan reports to is the joint board. And so we do not make action or take action without being in that legislative body, right? Being with that group. Right now, we are meeting in non-public after this meeting to just go out, go over like a mid-year feedback form. It's not really an evaluation. It's more where we are today based on the superintendent's goals to constructive criticism, applause where it's needed, and things we'd like to learn more about, giving him the second half of the year to, you know, get us that information or work with us to get us that information. So that's what's happening tonight. And then we will take our feedback to the joint board on the 24th of this month. And that will be discussed, and David Ryan will be doing a presentation basically on his goals and where he is at also. The next one is the wellness committee. Dawn is not here. Anything? Okay, all right. It's all about wellness. And then is there anything, new update on the Wheelwright Trust?
I think only that our next meeting is January 20th. And so we will best Indiana met with their school leadership teams to get some feedback from them on thinking for how to support teachers and students with the trust going forward and talk to them. And there can be the committee.
Great. So that's it for our committees, but when I look under the old business, which is the next on the agenda, it says COVID update. And I happen to be on the COVID transition mitigate, the COVID transition committee that meets every Wednesday morning with a lot of people in this room and across our entire S A U to talk about status of where we are with numbers, community spread, and how that's impacting our schools, what the impact has been on our nurses. Things like stopping doing the contract tracing sort of came from that committee and listening to what the nurses were experiencing in the last month and a half. And so that, that committee continues to meet. There are also, I think, members from the public. Yeah, parents are also involved in that. I am not part of the mitigation panel, but that panel is something that David Ryan set up to work with various doctors with various opinions on what sort of mitigation we should have at our schools. So we're trying to more listen to our community and get input from perhaps opposing opinions from where I stand. But we're trying to listen to the experts and parents and our school community to, to bring some more transparency around that and communication around that in a more formal manner. So hopefully we get more feedback from that. I don't think they've met yet this month.
Patty, can I ask a question about something that you said?
Yep.
Is there, can, can we comment more on the contact tracing for elementary schools? I know that contact tracing's different, well, it might appear to be different when the same 15 kids are in, say, a first-grade classroom as opposed to a middle school student who's going around to several different classrooms. And so I just had a follow-up question about it. It sounds like there's a lot of, sort of, a lot put on the nurses to contact trace, but just had some follow-up questions about decision-making specifically for the elementary schools and if it was possible that the elementary school contact tracing could be different than other schools given the way that we're laid out.
It is something I plan to bring up tomorrow at the committee meeting. I, I do think they are somewhat different animals, but with the rate of community spread, you have to assume that every room you walk into, you're probably in a room with at least one person with COVID. I mean, it's so, the numbers are so high outside of the schools that it's getting into the schools. And the contract tracing isn't that scientific. After the first one or two I got and my heart skipped a beat, I was like, the only thing I can do is wait for symptoms. There's literally nothing else to take action on. I do feel for parents who have young children in the house that aren't yet eligible to be vaccinated or perhaps they have a health condition. And so given the heads up, you know, that might help them prepare or take more precautions. So I am sensitive to that, and I'll bring it up to the committee. I feel like on our last call, the elementary nurses were more open to, well, it's not as big a deal for us because our students, they're out together on the playground, but mostly contained in one room together. But, you know, it's, they're pretty overwhelmed right now. So it, I'm not sure if the data makes sense to, you know, ask that of them.
So the communication that parents are getting from elementary schools is the weekly update on the district website? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Patty, have you also talked about at what point, sort of what will affect the decision to go back?
That has not been discussed. I think, it's my impression when we go to those meetings at 8:30 on Wednesday morning that it's kind of like what's happened the past week, because it does seem to be very fluid. And so that's why we meet every week, to try and talk about something that maybe popped up this past week in our last time. The contact tracing popped up because when we returned, the numbers were so high.
Yeah.
Nurses were having to contact trace, and it could have been hundreds of kids and phone calls, particularly at our larger schools, where they're trying to contract every. If you had 50 kids, you know, it isn't, it isn't four anymore. It's 50 kids. And then maybe 50 kids in a high school setting goes through seven periods a day. It was becoming unmanageable. And because, as Patty stated, the rates seem, the transmission seemed to be so high, it is, it is, I think, the safest thing to do as a parent to assume that your kid probably got exposed and watched for those symptoms. And as the governor said, and our commissioner has said, if your child is sick, don't send them to school. And so I think it's great that Patty's going to bring that up again tomorrow morning, and we'll see where it's at. You know, reaction over the past week, other people I'm sure have gotten emails and reactions to yes or no. And then I, the committee does a nice job of talking things through and getting a good perspective of their, you know, like she said, parents. This is a nice variety of people in that committee. They represent middle, high school, and elementary students, parents, et cetera.
So when the committee is, I'm sorry, did you follow? Go ahead, no, go ahead. So this committee is talking about mitigation strategies? Where, or the mitigation strategies that are in place, right? Like masking and?
That's not really this committee.
That's the panel.
It's the panel that Dr. Ryan has set up with health professionals, mental health professionals, to look at different strategies, what's working, what's not working, why we make decisions we make when it comes to the mitigation strategies we've chosen.
Okay.
And so they haven't met yet this month, so I don't have an update on that, but that is underway since last year.
And that, that's where he's gathering the information to communicate to the entire district about
Yes.
the decision about masking or having, continuing to have in-person learning versus remote and different things like that?
Yes. I am assuming that's where he will garner his recommendations to each of us individually.
Okay. But there is parent input at the weekly meetings on Wednesdays. Okay.
Yep. Thank you. I think the second part of Old Business was not supposed to be on there, so I'm just going to cross it out. So I think that's the end of our public meeting. We will come out of.
Make a motion.
Okay, I have to make a motion?
To go into non.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to go into non-public. For those. Oh, under RSA 91-A 311, Section A, I need a roll call vote.
I second.
All right, roll call vote. Patty?
Sarah Edwards.
Heather Eichmeyer?
Patty Soret. Okay.